I'd like to call this regularly scheduled meeting of the Harlingen City Commission, which is duly posted to order. At this time, call upon Commissioner Mike Mesmer to lead us into an indication.
Dear God, thank you for the gathering of these people here today. And may wisdom and truth prevail in the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome. Glad to have everybody here tonight. I hope everyone had a great holiday. And as we go into the new holiday season, we'll go to item one, which is the public announcement of events. And Dave Ralph will tell us about some of the holiday events that we have planned around the city, and probably some other stuff, too.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, and City Manager. There's certainly plenty to do to bring in the Christmas season here in Harlingen. One is a tradition as big as Christmas itself, almost, of course, is the 28th Annual Arroyo Holiday Lighting Ceremony with a special appearance by Santa Claus. There's going to be plenty of entertainment with a lot of different school organizations and community organizations there. It's Thursday, December 4th, which is coming up tomorrow night, starting at 6:30 at McKelvey Park. So we are sure that, weather permitting, there will be another huge, huge turnout for that event. The library has a number of things coming up on Thursday, also tomorrow evening, if you can squeak it in before you go to the Arroyo. There's a retirement and asset production workshop with information about Social Security, how you can use your assets for medical treatment, in terms of Social Security withheld, all types of information. That'll be from 6:00 to 7:00 tomorrow on the second-floor study room. The space is limited to 14 participants, but you can either come by the reference desk or call 216-5821 to reserve a spot for that event. Also, we've got the big RGV JC's Country Christmas Parade that'll be held downtown on Jackson Street, coming up Friday, starting at 7:00 PM. The RGV JC's, of course, do a lot of the organization for that, and they've got parade entry and vendor registration available yet online at rgvjc.com. There's a couple of phone numbers I recognize, especially Deanna Bustamante, at 629-1777... excuse me, 639-1777. If there are any questions or people want to try to get in at the last second, I'm sure they can accommodate that. Also, at the Harlingen Public Library, they're going to have a Harlingen Crafts Event coming up on Saturday, this December 6th, from 2:00 to 4:00. There's going to be an afternoon full of arts and crafts with Christmas cards, reindeer masks. They're going to be making some snowmen, even though we don't have snow, which is a miracle in itself. If you have questions, ask Laura Garza. Her phone number is 216-5820. And on that vein, there'll also be a Reading Wonderland at the Public Library, Thursday, December 18th, from 6:00 to 8:00. That's going to be a lot of activities for the entire family, not just the little kiddos. There's going to be stories, caroling, cookies, which has got to be worth it in itself, with hot chocolate, and another surprise guest. I wonder who that could be? Contact Laura again at 216-5820, or it's got her email address at lgarza@harligenlibrary.com. Related to that event, they're also inviting volunteers to help out with that. The helpers would be there from 5:30 to 8:30. Middle and high school students can earn up to three volunteer hours by helping out during that Wonderland Event. And again, it lists some of the activities there. And again, for youngsters that are looking for those volunteer hours, if they contact Laura, she can make sure they get credit for that community service. And jumping above and beyond the eve of the New Year, we're making plans for the 11th Annual City of Harlingen Winter Text and Appreciation Fiesta, which, like all the other events, of course, is free admission. Tried not to repeat that too often, but it is free admission. That'll be Monday, January 19th, from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM, a Casa de Amistad. Every year, they seem to add a little bit more. This year, they're going to have a magic show for winter texts, which will be pretty neat. And of course, my favorite, the Classic Car Show. There's going to be a quilt exhibit and a number of performances by local groups, live band, the whole shebang. So there's some other things I know that didn't quite make the list. I know the museum, for example, will have its big Christmas tree extravaganza that'll go on exhibit soon. So the public's always welcome to check the Harlingen Visitors Convention and Visitors' Bureau webpage or our website, and they can find out more details. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Dave. Item two is a proclamation planning November 16th and 23rd of 2014, as National Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week. So I know Bill Reagan is here at the Star Center. San Vito is here with Ela Bosaba. Vencia in San Vito, the Family Crisis Center. You're in. Okay. And we want to... It's late, but we can make it this week, too. Whereas for the past several years, the National Coalition for the Homeless and National Student Campaign has sponsored National Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week. Whereas the purpose of this proclamation is to educate the public about the many reasons people are hungry and homeless, including the shortage of affordable housing in the city of Harlingen for very low-income residents, and to encourage support for homeless assistance service providers, as well as community service opportunities for students and school service opportunities, or good potential organizations. Whereas there are many organizations committed to sheltering, providing supportive services, as well as meals and food supplies to the homeless, including those of officials at the Rio Grande Valley, Family Crisis Center, the Harlingen Housing Authority, Star Center, the VA Texas Valley Hospital of Health and Care System, Branson Community Health Clinic, Path of Care Food Bank, Rio Grande Valley, by the way, at northern Cameron County, Area Agency, Zima's Del Valle, Cameron County Children's Assistance Center, CASA Cameron and Lewis County, Trauma Protection Behavioral Center, Texas Workforce Commission, Department of Health and Human Services Commission, Ela Bosaba, Vencia, Texas Rehabilitation Commission, VA Assistant for Recamp Services, Women and Infants' Children's Way across ministries, First Presbyterian Church, Alliance Global Harlingen, Promote Peter Development Corporation, Valley Aids, whereas the theme of National Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week 2014 is Bring Home, Bring America Home. Whereas the intent of the National Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week is consistent with the activities of Cameron County Homeless Partnership, it is further acknowledged that although the action taken is absent of designated week due to CCHP operational activities, the intent of National Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week has been achieved. Whereas the city of Harlingen recognizes that hunger and homelessness continues to be a serious problem for many individuals and families in the city of Harlingen throughout our country, and now therefore our Chris Ross, Mayor of the City of Harlingen, hereby proclaim November 16th and 23rd, and anytime you want it to be, the National Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week, and the city of Harlingen hereby encourage all citizens to recognize that many people do not have housing and need support from citizens of private, public, non-profit service entities. So we take pride in joining with you and trying to create awareness about this issue and also take the opportunity, Bill, and all of you, to express our appreciation for what you do to help combat this very serious problem in our communities here in Harlingen. So do you would like to say something? Please feel free.
I just want to thank you, Mayor, and Commissioners, Mr. Juret, and the City Commission, for all the support that you give to us, and those officials, and also the other organizations. So thank you very much, sir.
All right. Thank you for all you do. Thank you. Item three is a presentation by E. Ray Gard, M.A., the Program Director at UT Health Science Center, San Antonio, regarding the City of Harlingen Assessment on Active Living and Healthy Eating. Welcome.
Thank you very much for having us, allowing us to come up tonight and talk a little bit about our work we do with the partnership. I actually brought my boss. And so, Dr. Blin?
Ray, raise your mic.
Dr. Blin Reineger will be presenting on my behalf, and I'm going to pass out our information.
Mayor, Commissioners, it's my pleasure to be here. I'm Belinda Reineger. You just met E. Ray Gard, and we have been working with your Health Department Director, Mr. Ramiro Gonzalez, and your community health worker, Ms. Ariana Dominguez. Ms. Dominguez was hired as part of this contract that has been in place now for approximately one year, and I'm here to give you a status report, and it's a very good status report. This is a contract with University of Texas School of Public Health in the city of Harlingen, and we have established this contract to work with local cities to address chronic disease in our communities, particularly by addressing the risk factors, both individual and environmental risk factors that exist in our cities. One of the first activities that we did in order to best understand how to proceed was to conduct a community assessment, and that's the document that you're looking at. And it's specific to Harlingen, and in particular, we looked at five different areas of Harlingen, some of the most low-income areas in our community, to assess what environmental and individual factors we could address to improve physical activity and healthy food choice in particular, the underlying behaviors of chronic disease. You're going to see that there are, like many of our communities, things that we can do to improve that. And you're going to notice one, maybe two points that are of particular interest. One is that residents who live in walkable, bikeable communities are likely to be six to 10 pounds lighter than residents who live in communities that are not walkable and bikeable. That translates to far fewer healthcare costs. Additionally, when we have communities that are walkable, the homes in those areas are worth more money. And so, some of the things to be commended in Harlingen are the efforts that you're already doing to create those walkable and bikeable areas. In the last year, Ms. Dominguez and Mr. Gonzalez have worked together to establish extensive training for Ms. Dominguez as a community health worker on various topics. She has worked with partners to screen over 230 residents for blood pressure and follow-up on those who needed additional referrals. She's also screened 230 people for high BMI. This was in excess of the contract numbers, so she did more than was expected. Additionally, she's teaching healthy cooking classes and exercise classes in one of your new developments, the La Casitas Haciendas, out on Old 83, and working with the residents there to engage them in healthier behaviors. We have just now established a new contract for another year, and we're very pleased to have that opportunity to work with you again. Then the next year, some of the highlights will include having another environmental change project, meaning in this past year, we looked at enhancing the Veterans Park, and we will have another environmental change project that we'll work on with you. We'll expand blood pressure follow-ups and BMI follow-ups. We'll provide no-cost influenza vaccinations in some of these communities that we've been talking about here. We'll continue on education with fruit and vegetables and physical activity, and we'll continue the exercise classes. So we're very pleased, and we feel like as we move forward, the assessment results will show improvement. But we wanted to provide this update and answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions?
Yeah, I have a question. What's a traffic calming measure?
Speed bumps would be an example. Speed bumps.
What is this chip that they put around the door?
The chip?
Yes.
The...
Well, very interesting. I would also be interested in seeing some basis for some of the scores here and some of their conclusions.
We'd be glad to share.
Because maybe we're doing a little bit better than the two-day assessment would indicate, but also certainly this is the kind of information that we could incorporate in our comprehensive plan, in our comprehensive planning process. So it's great information to have, and so we look forward to continuing the partnership and working together to make sure we get accurate data, and we can improve in the areas where we think we can improve. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Great to have you here tonight. Good night. Item four is a presentation by Pat Turman White, the Humane Society of Harlingen President of the City of Harlingen Adoption of Ordnance for Mandatory Spay, Leader of Microchipping for the City of Harlingen.
Hi, I'm Pat Turman White, President of the Humane Society of Harlingen. Here with me is Kim Warnick, the Executive Director of the Shelter. We're asking the Commission to please consider a new ordinance that would make spay and neuter and microchipping mandatory. Also, we are asking for an amendment to the ordinance that limits the amount of animals per household. I prepared a package for each of you. I hope you've had a chance to review it. The Humane Society of the United States estimates that 8 million cats and dogs will enter shelters annually. One female dog and her offspring equals 67,000 dogs in six years. One female cat and her offspring equal 420,000 cats in seven years. I could rattle off national and statewide facts and statistics till I'm blue in the face, but thankfully, I won't do that. Here are the statistics that matter to us here in Harlingen. These are our facts. The fact is that 14% of Harlingen's population drops off an animal at the shelter annually. 14%. Of the animals that we get, roughly 10% to 12% are adopted annually. Only 4% are claimed by their owners annually. This... These numbers have faces. These animals on the side of this camp, these were animals that were in our shelter early October. This is very graphic, and you might not want to see it, but unfortunately, this is what happens to... I guess it's not going to play. You probably didn't want to see that. And if you all do want to see it, I'll be glad to email it to you, but this is the euthanization, one shift. It happens three times a day at the shelter. Three times a day, our staff have to euthanize just to make space. 80% of the animals brought into the Humane Society of Harlingen are put down. Now I'm going to turn it over to Kim. Thank you.
By making the spay-neuter mandatory, you're effectively decreasing the number of homeless and roaming animals in our community. Dogs that are fixed are three times less likely to bite, therefore decreasing the number of bite cases in the city, as well as decreasing the rabies risk for the community. Our animal control brings in approximately 2,000 animals a year. Of those animals, approximately 97% are not spayed or neutered. So by increasing our spay-neuter numbers, that's going to effectively remove the problem from the community. Intact animals are more likely to roam in search of mates. The Humane Society has long been advocates of spay-neuter. We began offering assistance to low-income families to have their pets spayed or neutered by our local veterinary community back in 2009. We also began fundraising for our low-cost spay-neuter clinic. We opened in the spring of 2014... or, excuse me, the spring of 2010. As of last month, we have completed 14,000 spay and neuters for the local animals. We continue to offer a voucher program for the area residents who are on limited incomes. This makes spay and neuter attainable for everyone in the community and gives no one an excuse not to have this done. By being proactive on this issue, you will increase property values in the area, making it a safer community for everyone, and you will be making the city of Harlingen a more desirable place for people to live. The mandatory microchipping is quickly becoming a more acceptable means of identification for the animals. Microchipping is a radio frequency ID tag that's implanted under the skin between the shoulder blades of the dogs and cats. All of our shelters and our animal control scan for that chip. So if we can get all of the animals chipped, we can then get them back to their owners if they get turned in or are loose. But it also gives our animal control officers an ability to assess responsible parties when dealing with dogs that are roaming at large, as well as other bite cases that people are not going to claim as their animals. The final amendment we're asking for is an increase in the total number of animals per household. The increase to five will allow more people to claim animals that are currently at large in their neighborhoods. We get a lot of people saying, "Oh, well, we feed them, but they're not our animals" because of the limits, and they want to be within the law. In closing, we'd like to respectfully ask you to move this proposal forward to the next step. Did anyone have any questions?
What do you think the cost would be with the RF chip? Would it be something that the center would do, that the Humane Society would do, a discounted service? Because when I looked, I called the local veterinarian and just asked what they would charge to do that, and they said $65, and I'm sure that's just the going rate for somebody that walked... one person that walks in and does it. And I noticed in some of the other communities you referenced, it was as low as maybe $15 in some places. How would you propose to get every dog in Harlingen chipped?
Well, what we're offering at the Humane Society, and we have been for quite some time, normal pricing on microchipping with us is $15. We're also proposing that if you choose to pass this, we'll run a $10 special during the grace period, which we suggest to be 120 days.
And I know, too, now when they spay or neuter a dog, they tattoo them. Is that correct, Mark?
Yes, sir.
They didn't used to always do that. How would you deal with that with older pets? Would somebody have to bring in their, you know, that aren't marked? Is that readily visible, the scar? Or obviously, with a male dog, it would be, but with a female dog, it would be a little more difficult to figure out.
Correct. Some scars are visible on the females, but if they have their records from their veterinarian from that animal being spayed or neutered, that would be appropriate for them to bring to us.
I don't think that'd be right to put another city in regulation with the animals. And there's going to be a bunch of cats and dogs there. Nobody's going to claim it because they don't got the money to put that chip on it. So what are you going to do with thousands of cats, thousands of dogs, and they're going to be with no owners like that?
Well, sir, we already have that problem. As you can tell from the numbers that we presented to you, we're getting on average of 9,000 animals brought into our shelter every year. So by spaying and neutering, by mandating that, it's going to cut those numbers down, as well as cut down the numbers of strays in the area.
And I notice in your statistics in here, it says in 2012, you entered into a contract with another city. And then I look under the dogs that are pets that were euthanized, 8,190. That's 23 a day, every day. Does that include another city, or is that just Harlingen numbers?
Those are Harlingen numbers. We separate the Mercedes out. Mercedes, most of those animals are put down. They're mostly running at large. We have a lot of owner turn-ins at the shelter. And let me answer your microchip question, sir. The whole thing now is no one's claiming they're animals. They're not claiming them now, and we know who they are, but we can't prove who they are. If they're microchipped, we can assess and assign who has to take responsibility for the animal. We've been taking responsibility, and we're tired of having to put them down. We've exhausted our resources. We're always here begging for money. We're not this time. We're asking you for help to mandate something that... This is one problem that has an easy solution. Not all problems have easy solutions. We all know, even opponents of mandated legislation of spay-neuter know that it works. And that's the bottom line. It works. We have a population of 30% poverty. These people need our help. They need us to continue to spay-neuter. We need your help to make the other people do it. We can get the message out to the people that don't have...
Why would you... Why would you... Why would you... Let's see, maybe just to have the staff meet with you and come back with some staff recommendations
That would be wonderful.
On any minor patients of the ordinance that the staff would like, and the Commission could sit with them and move through on from there. Okay? And so we'll assess it for the City Manager to get with you, or one of his representatives, and then we'll work with the Labor Department to examine what we can do and bring those back. That may be one of the options for the Commission to consider, would bring that back in particular case.
Great.
And just for the record, the chipping takes about 10 seconds. All it is, is an injection with a needle, and it's done.
That's correct.
I mean, it doesn't... It's like getting a shot.
That's all it is.
For $16, and that'll be good for the people that got the money to do it, but if they don't want to do it, I don't think we can force them to do it.
I have some other questions regarding this matter, but I'll reserve that until we actually get something back from staff. I mean, I think that...
I agree. I had some questions, too, but we'll just wait.
Okay.
I won't wait. I'll ask a question. The animals are brought in. Can you immediately or quickly tell which ones are feral and which ones are domestic that are running around?
Absolutely.
And do you have a sense in percentages how many animals are brought in that are feral versus domesticated ones running around?
Well, you know, we have two separate intakes. We have the 2,000 from animal control, which 97% of those are not fixed, running at large, bite cases, et cetera. The other 7,000 are owner turn-ins. A lot of them are just the result of mass produce... mass littering. That's it. They just... They don't have time for the puppies, the kittens, and they just keep letting them happen. We are fixing them as fast as we can. We just need to mandate it so that we have the extra help. I believe that 20% of the people are always going to do it, 20% of the people are never going to do it, and we're fighting for that 60 in-between that legislature might give the push.
If y'all have questions you want to ask, go ahead. I mean, they might give the staff some direction, what y'all are thinking about, which your concerns are.
Concerning the feral, you do a physical marking besides the tattoo on feral, but it's kind of hard to pick up a cat that's feral. Is that correct?
That is correct. We do what they call an ear tipping on the left ear so that it's very visible from a distance, so you're not getting up close and personal with those cats.
And are y'all microchipping them also?
Yes.
Because I know that people bring cats in that they've trapped, and they do the humane thing, which is to get them fixed rather than put them down, but they don't take them in.
No, we recommend microchipping. We're doing it right now for $10.
Okay. And so when you do the microchip on a feral animal that's going to get released because it is a wild animal, do you put an owner, or is it just an ID to show that it came through the system?
It came through the system. It came through the system. The ear tipping, if you're doing trap-neuter-release and you trap a cat that's had the ear tipped, you're gonna just let it go. You're not gonna bother to bring it in.
Okay.
You already know it's fixed. That's the objective.
I'm certainly, I think there might be some more information that could be shared. I know to educate me as far as, I understand the general scope of the problem. One of my concerns is, I mean, I'm a pet owner, and I think I'm a responsible pet owner. I don't have my dogs running around unattended. And one of my concerns is making something like this mandatory for responsible pet owners that do not want to get their animals fixed.
We are not asking for it in absolute. We are saying, in the package that I provided for you, we are saying that if you choose not to get your animal fixed, that you pay an intact license fee of $50 a year. That $50 then in turn goes to help animal control. We are also asking that the running at large for a non-altered animal is raised from...
I like the idea of the chipping. I think that's a great, in the event an animal gets out by some, let's say there's a storm knocks over a fence. You know, that happened one time with hurricanes coming in, and animals just start roaming. And a quick identification of the animals. But again, I think if it does come back, I mean, we could certainly have more discussion on that. But even the issue of a responsible pet owner having to pay that, it's almost like a fine for being a responsible pet owner, that will help subsidize the irresponsible pet owners. I just, I mean, maybe I'm not hearing it completely or accurately, but that's just one of my concerns.
The fact of the matter is that we have all these irresponsible people already. We have 14% of the population bring an animal every year to the shelter. Doesn't that disturb you at all? 14% turn in one animal a year.
That's not the point.
Well, the point is we're euthanizing 8,000 animals a year.
Good, maybe at some point we can have actual dialogue, because I'm not able to, you know, complete my sentences.
I'm sorry.
But, you know, I'm just voicing some concerns that are going through my head. I haven't arrived at a decision, if it does come back to us for a decision. But it'd be helpful if you're able to help us answer those questions. I'm not trying to argue with you. I'm just raising, you know, some concerns that are going through my head at this point.
The tricky part gets to dealing with the animals that aren't gonna be spayed or neutered, the breeding animals and the show animals and things like that. Whether or not the $50 a year is fair, or should it be, you know, $100 one time, or whatever it is, those are the kind of things that need to be hashed out, because if we're gonna discuss it...
Right, and that's in place in most communities, that if you want a breeding license, if you want an intact animal, that's whatever you all feel is fair for your community. All we're asking you for is to consider mandating this for the other people who aren't going to do it on their own.
I think at the minimum, that chipping will help identify animals so that the problem ones, that you can trace back to actual addresses and owners. I think I tend to agree with that. My question still enters just on that issue of making it mandatory and then having fees attached to that to the responsible pet owners. I still need to get past that, so...
Okay. We certainly would be happy to meet with you and answer the questions you might have.
Yeah. Any information that you have about any, the statistics on communities that have passed these types of ordinances, and if they have the statistics on how it has affected the number of animals that you have to euthanize, I think that would be helpful information to look at, so we can see, you know, what the impact has been in other communities that have enacted this kind of a ordinance, okay?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you very much for your presentation tonight.
Thank you.
We can work with you on examining this further. All right. Item five is the community-wide thing of trash off today, held November 22nd, Renshaw Bill Park, 1111 Road.
Mayor, Commissioner, I wanted to report on the community-wide trash off day that was held on November 22nd. Typically, we have four of these throughout the year. The one on November 22nd was held at the Renshaw Bill Park, made it in to 12 noon. And we are happy to report the total of 86, three tons of debris was brought in by local citizens. You see some of them bringing in the debris. And a total of 27 tires were collected. This was the fourth and last for this year, and in total, we brought in, for the four events, a total of 30 tons of debris and close to 500 tires from local property owners. So it was a very successful year in terms of the community-wide trash off events, and we're looking forward toward next year. I have my own questions.
Okay, great. That's a good, that's a good result there on that trash off. Item six is the approval of the minutes of regular meeting of November 5th, 2014, and the special meeting of November 13th, 2014. Are there any additions or corrections to these minutes?
I do have a question. On the meeting of the 5th, I believe we had an executive session, and I came back in, I think you left, in the middle of that executive session? Because it shows that you brought the meeting back to order. Is my memory, it's been a while. Am I remembering correct?
Yeah.
Is that correct? Mayor left?
Your memory is correct. I exited the meeting and I did not return, so...
I brought the meeting back to order, so I think it should reflect that on the meeting of November the 5th.
Okay. Are there any other additions or corrections to the meeting minutes? Okay, with that correction, is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor say aye. If opposed, like signed, motion carries. Item seven, public hearing to consider an ordinance of first reading to Nathan Street, Phoenix Drive, located adjacent to Harlingen, Sullivan, Bennett School of the Street. Health professions on the west side of 25th Street, FM 507, north of Rio Honda Road.
Community Mayor, Commissioners, the applicant is requesting that the street is adjacent to the School of Health professions, School District, School of Health professions, located on the west side of 25th Street, north of Rio Honda Road, be named Phoenix Drive. The school district requested this name because this is the name of their mascot. This is the subject street. As you can see, it's on the west side of 25th Street, and it's the School of Health professions. Public hearing was conducted by the P&amp;Z Commission. There was no concern addressed at the meeting. Property owners along the subject street segment were notified as required by city ordinance, as well as a notification was also sent to South Texas Emergency Medical, Emergency Care, Cameron County, Tech dot, US Post Office, and Hards and Water Works, and staff didn't receive any objection to the request's street name. Staff and P&amp;Z Commission are recommending approval of the request. Take any questions on that.
Okay. This is a newer road.
It's a new road, right?
Yeah, so there are no existing homes on that road to affect their address change.
Right, down that street, no.
We can get their name.
That's the name of the school mascot.
I'm asking a public hearing, open to the public hearings. Anyone likes to speak for or against naming the street Phoenix. Hearing now, a closed public hearing, go ahead and be considered, take action to approve or something, naming the Phoenix Drive, ask that the caption be read.
An ordinance in City Harlingen, naming the street adjacent to Harlingen, C.A.S.D. School of Health professions, located on the west side of 25th Street, FM 507, and north of Rio Honda Road, is Phoenix Drive, ready for publication and rotating under matters related to foregoing.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. If opposed, like signed, motion carries. Very good. Item eight, consider to take action to approve a one-year contract with the city ordinance and RGP Amateur Adult Soccer Association for the use of soccer fields at Festival Park. Those free soccer fields are not required, Mr. Porter.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. I have before you is a contract between City Harlingen and RGP Amateur Adult Soccer Association. And this is a one-year contract. Everything's the same as last year. We have received all the documents required. We reviewed them and have been approved.
Staff recommends, is there a motion to approve the contract?
So moved.
I want to ask you something about that. The man is over here that, the one is, that want to take care of that park?
I'm sorry?
The man is, the one he rented this park, he's here.
Manland?
Yeah, the man is...
I don't believe he's here.
I got some questions for you, because I've been having a lot of complaints about that park over there.
As far as them not allowing the people to use it, or they go off, or not taking care of what was...
I think that you did tackle this for the next minute, because I want that man, the one he's gonna take, this park will come over here.
To be here. All right.
All second, is this a two-part, or we approve it this time and then come back and prove it again, or is this...
No, it's a, we would approve the contract, so there was a motion, and you just seconded it. I think what Commissioner Sanchez is asking for is, yeah, item be tabled, so if somebody wants to...
Are you aware of any problems over there? I know this went through the park board before it came to us. Is that not correct?
That's correct.
And they're recommending approval?
Yes.
And they filled their 990, and it's a legitimate organization and office.
That's correct.
Loops and loops.
And you, I think it's been asked already, have you received any kind of complaints or concern?
None at all. Staff hasn't received any complaints. I haven't heard anything. The board hasn't heard anything, so...
And nobody's come to the board? That's what my point is. I mean, I don't think this is the place to do that. I think you should...
No, my question more than throughout the year, have they received any type of complaints or concern?
I haven't heard of any.
Okay, well, unless whoever made the motion wants to amend their motion to table it, we have a motion in a second.
If there are no complaints, I think we should vote a or n.
Okay. Questions been called, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
If opposed, all right, motion carries. But we'll, we can continue to monitor that situation, Commissioner, and make sure that everybody has a fair shake.
It don't matter that the team, you guys approved it already. I mean, that's why I want you to table this item, because if these men don't come over here, how they wanna ask it some questions on all the things that happen in there.
Okay. Well, at this point, what we, what we ask is, maybe the staff look into this and report back.
We can be with Commissioner Sanchez individually and with the...
Yeah, okay. Item nine, is consider to take action to renew the interlocal agreement between the City of Harlingen and North Central Texas Council of Governments for cooperative purchasing for actuarial shared services.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioner, City Manager. The city is required to calculate post-employment benefits every two years. We had a contract two years ago with the North Central Texas Council, and this would be a renewal. By renewing this, we're able to tap into savings when we contract the actual company that will do the actuarial for the post-employment benefits. This will be reported in our end-of-the-year CAFRA, Comprehensive Annual Financial Report.
Our executive summary indicates that it doesn't have, it says, you know, our funds budgeted for this account, yes or no, and it's...
Yes. Yes.
Okay. Is there a motion to renew the interlocal agreement?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Thank you.
All those in favor say aye. If opposed, like signed, motion carries. Item 10, consider to take action to authorize the city manager to execute an agreement between the City of Harlingen and Gabriel Raider Smith and Company for Form Actuarial and Salted Services as recommended by North Central Texas Council of Governments.
This will be the actual company that would calculate the post-employment benefits, and we would contract with them.
Is there a motion to authorize the execution of the agreement?
So moved, Mayor. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. If opposed, like signed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Item 11, board appointments. Are there any board appointments?
None.
Yes, I'd like to reappoint Gina Conomongalay out to the Harlingen community approval.
And with that, is there a motion to approve board appointments?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor say aye. Motion carries. Item is the post-executive session regarding the following items, verse 2, Chapter 551, Subchapter D, DTC, Texas Government Code, 551.072, regarding purchase exchange lease or value of real property. 551.0712, provide legal advice to council in connection with cities' rights, cities' privileges, obligations related to collective bargaining process relating matters with the Harlingen Police Department at pursuant to 51.0712 and 551.087, regarding deliberations relating to economic development negotiations and/or to discuss or deliberate financial or other incentives for the business prospect of this project mountain and seek legal advice from our city attorney. Is there a motion to go to executive session?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. All right, ladies and gentlemen, the city commission's gonna go back to the back room and talk to our lawyer about some of these matters. There may be action on two of the items, so there may be action after we return. Okay. We're out of executive session at 7:12, and we're going to item 13, is consider to take action to authorize the city manager to purchase properties described as being 28.53 acres of land, 39.61 acre tract of land, today it is 41.21 acres of land. Is there a motion to table this?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. If opposed, like signed. Item 14, consider and appropriate action to approve a collective bargaining labor agreement between the City of Harlingen and Harlingen Police Officers and Law Enforcement Association, newly recognized as a jury bargaining agent for fiscal years 2015 and 2016.
May I make a motion that we prove the collective bargaining labor agreement between the City of Harlingen and the Harlingen Police Officers Law Enforcement Association?
Second.
All right, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye. If opposed, like signed, motion carries. All right, item 15, citizen communication.
We have Joe Louisville, 2309, on the floor.
For the record, Jose Louis Jr., 2309, on the road, 78552, through the evening, City Commission. I didn't have enough copies, but I dropped off, and I call Chief Mayor's manifesto. That's what I like to call it, because of his opinions. And what he basically does, he says, five things you owe the HPD, and five things you do not owe. And he talks about a good work attitude, but he says that if you don't have a good work attitude, go do a stealth job search on the site. In other words, hide the fact that you're looking for a better opportunity. He says, number two is the truth. You owe the HPD the truth for things that happen at work. Of course, he's been very truthful on his actions, on his behavior, on a lot of things that he's brought before the city commission. Good care of equipment, he talks about that, and of course, you know, how about the loss and stolen equipment, and the fact that he did cause damage to a police car and didn't report it? You know? Direct complaining. Don't do, don't do direct complaint. I mean, it's about, you know, during the collective bargaining talks, they needed a better collective, a better bill of rights, but solely based on his behavior. Talks about five things you do not owe to the HPD. Says your health. He says, what would you not bake cookies for a living? You're right, Mayor. You don't, okay? Then he talks about earn-earn loyalty, and he talks about your soul, and he talks about your life. And he wants to quote General Georges Patton. And Patton said, "No bastard ever won a war by dying for the country." He won't, I can't read it. He won it by making the other poor bastard die for his country. Basically, he's passing this out to his troops, subsetting the troops. And there's a whole lot of other things going on, but City Commission, I wish all a good Christmas, and I hope the best for Harlingen PD.
All right, thank you. Is there any other...
There's no others.
All right, that will be adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Good night. Good night.